I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for November 28th, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Hall?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Short?
Here.
Jalka?
Here.
Layland?
Here. Thank you. Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today. Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign. The agenda's received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak during public comments that is on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Reader?
Good morning.
Morning.
Our total bill payment today is $381,035.95, and of that, $35.20 is being paid from the 60-40 fund. There were nothing unusual or significant today. Everything appears to be in order. Any questions for me?
All right, none? Please answer as your name is called.
Hall?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
Jalka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. Two things I wanted to talk about this morning. One is an update on our work session from last week. I was to find out more information about the typical life or the life of a secondary road assessment district. Mr. Trynall and I have were tasked with finding that out, and I will just give my update first. So I did talk to Lynn County again, and they indicated that the life of the secondary road assessment district is the life of the improvement that you're doing. Typically, in their case, they are putting down an asphalt overlay. They expect that life to last 15 years. Generally, an overlay can last 20 years, and I should say I have also sent you an email with this information as well. So in this case, when we were talking about a seal code, that life would typically be two to five years, so a three-year average life for a seal-coated road. In that case, the assessment would go for three years. So that seems rather that could be an administrative burden for us to have to re-up this secondary road assessment district every three years, not to mention that those people would be getting a seal code at a reduced rate. So again, the question of fairness comes into, and I have considered that more, and at this point, I would like to not go ahead with asking you all to set a public hearing for this. I have contacted the proponent of this, who went around and gathered the petitions. I have talked to him at length about what happened last week and my decision to not go forward with the public hearing. He did ask how he could talk with you. We discussed that. I told him he could call you or email you, et cetera. Did you want to add anything, Mr. Trynall?
Only that, number one, I agree with Kathy's overall take on the code. It actually provides in Chapter 311 that if there was any money left over after you create the improvement from what you've collected for it, it would get refunded. So that supports this notion that it really only goes to that particular improvement. I don't see anything in there that prohibits the assessing improvements to the improvement, so to speak, or even maintenance, depending if you could prove there are additional costs or things like that. But I definitely agree from the talking I've been doing, mostly to Michelle, that it sounds like it could be quite an administrative burden to undergo this, especially if we're talking about a two-, three-, four-year lifespan for an improvement.
And I assume we have, like, limited seal coating used now for a reason. I was going to say, too, in the county, it was only a small amount.
Right. Currently, this county has no policy, no adaptive policy on seal coating. We allow seal coating. It's mainly used as a dust control purpose. We use it, the county pays for it in some of those roads that we have historically done for many years now, as well as in our rural subdivisions. So we have no restriction on people out in the county wanting to use it as a dust control. We do allow basically any length of seal coat. They are the contract, the private vendor who applies it. They go through that vendor. All they get from us is a permit, just like any other type of dust control.
Thank you, Kathy. And I think you also sent an email regarding your response to the residents out there.
I did. So the letter should go out today, and I believe I forwarded that to all of you as well. Do you have any more questions on that topic? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention that winter driving season is upon us, and I urge the public, everyone, to slow down and give room to our snowplows. We are ordering our three newest snowplows. They will come with the blue lights on them, the rear-facing blue lights. The DOT adopted these several years ago, and they found that through studies to be very effective at the time, and hopefully the newness of these blue lights on snowplows has not worn off. So we are ordering those on our plows now. So please slow down and give snowplows plenty of room. I also want to state that you can sign up for updates on our county website. We give road condition updates, particularly through the months of November through March. People may want to get those updates. And then lastly, just a reminder that our county crews, we work typically from 5:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. We do not have a night crew. We are not like the Iowa DOT. The Iowa DOT is able to work through the night, and oftentimes that does result in clearer roads for the driving public would be the DOT roads. We simply cannot afford and do not have the personnel to run a night shift. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else would like to give an update? Anyone on Zoom that would like to give an update?
Yeah, Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. Just very quickly, wanted to let everyone know the Hickory Hills Holiday Light Show begins this Friday evening, runs from 6:00 to 9:00. We will operate every Friday and Saturday up until December the 23rd. Lots of new things, like always, so we think it'll be a great show. Crew's working on it. We're happy for a few warm days here at the end of the week to finish things up, but we're in pretty good shape that way. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. We are advertising it, obviously, on our social media sites and things like that, and we'll continue to flood that over the next several days. But anyway, we start this Friday. I hope everyone can come down and see the show. It should be pretty good. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to number five. Minutes approved for November 21st, 2023.
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 All same sign. Minutes are approved. Item six is the consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove something for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Short?
Yes.
Jalka?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes. Moving on to item seven, other business. A motion to approve the Urban County Coalition 2024 Legislative Priorities.
In the meeting where Gary presented or Larry presented, I brought up the desire for the ability to have a standalone EMA levy, and I haven't seen any communication from them on that. And so before I vote to approve, I want to see those included, or if it doesn't have the support of the coalition, I just want to see that they tried.
Okay, because I was going to say that'll probably be the ultimate decision if the rest of the members don't, so sure.
Neither of them are on now, right?
I'm sorry?
None of them are on.
No. So we'll table that for next week, because I know they weren't meeting for a couple times than they are this week.
Standalone, Chris, you mean having legislation where they have taxing authority?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Correct.
Item B is the discussion on the county zoning regulations and county road vacations. So we'll probably begin, I was going to say, Mr. Youngblood, you're the one that brought these matters up a couple of weeks ago, so let's start with you.
I'd like to start with Youngblood Road, vacation of part of it, not the total road. You have a picture on it. It's this picture or that one, or there's another map that shows where Youngblood Road is. I started renting the farm at the end of this road in 1989, and been doing all the maintenance, snow removal, mowing, everything that has to be done with the road is done by me. It's been done by the Youngblood family for probably 100 years. The county does not move snow, doesn't do anything. I've been in contact over the last few years with Kathy, trying to get it vacated. One time, the very first time, letters were sent to all the neighbors around, and then it died. I don't know why. That was about four years ago. And in May, I talked to Kathy about it, and she said she would be all right with vacating the road as long as it was my property on both sides of the road. So if you go about 300 feet from the center of D-38 back to the south, and that is where my property is on both sides of the road, and I'm asking the county to vacate the section 300 feet south of the center of D-38, quit claim deed to me since I've been maintaining it and taking care of it since 1989. That's why I hope to accomplish on that.
So is the request to vacate you're wanting the county to do, and you've had the discussion with Kathy?
Well, I'd rather have it vacated than have the county do it, because I had a neighbor that I do not get along with, who came flying down into my yard, almost ran me and my wife off the road. I complained to the sheriff about this, and he says, as long as this is a public road, anybody can come down into your yard and turn around. And the only way I can stop harassment and trespassers onto my property is to get a sign up at the other end that says "private drive." And that's another reason I would like, because if you went on to the real estate mapping, it shows the road going all the way, and my garage is actually setting in the roadway.
And you said you met with Kathy on this?
What?
You did meet with Kathy on this?
Yes, I've talked to Kathy over the phone and here a few times, and she, last time we talked was in May, and she said it would be fine, basically that.
So, yeah, I was going to say, we need to hear from Kathy.
So we do agree with Mr. Youngblood. We would like to vacate as much of Youngblood Road as we can. We, of course, would like to vacate it up to Washburn Road. And as you know, when the county vacates a road, if we've been there by permanent easement, which we have been historically, that's how most of the county roads here in Iowa, in Blackhawk County, have been permanent easement for well over 100 years now. Typically, when we give up those rights, we relinquish those rights. It goes back to the underlying title holder at the center line, and so we would really like to give that up all the way to Washburn Road. In talking to Mr. Youngblood, there was some concern about the first or the 300 feet closest to Washburn Road. We would, of course, like to give the rights back at the center line to his neighbor and to him. There was some concern about that, so honestly, it just kind of got put on the back burner, and there it sat for since May now. So we would move ahead. Honestly, we don't really want to have to plow that 300 feet from where Mr. Youngblood would like us to vacate it to Washburn Road. It's kind of been our hesitation.
Is this a good time for me to interject with something? I have concerns about, and this was the concern that I raised, the concern about the 300 feet. Because the property to the east of that road, for that 300 feet is owned by different landowner, we'd have to have that landowner consent, or we could be looking at devaluing his property, is what I'm concerned about, because that provides access to those parcels to the east that are not owned by Mr. Youngblood. So that is why I raised a concern when I spoke with Kathy a number of months ago, and I also spoke with Mr. Youngblood as well about that. And I think that's why he's not requesting that portion to be vacated. Now, I know from speaking, or it seems, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kathy, but it seems like the concern from your angle or from your end was it might be difficult to plow only the 300 feet or get turned around if we do that, or maintain just that. I don't remember.
That's correct. We would have, we'd put a mortar grader on it, and then it would be difficult for that grader to turn around.
So I guess, yeah, I'm trying to understand.
It's going to be all the way to Washburn Road, or we don't do it, because it doesn't make sense to leave 300 feet of a road. That doesn't make sense for our crews, but no problem with vacating it.
Is there, do we expect any resistance from others? Do we expect any resistance from the other parties involved?
The other party will take it, but then it's going to cause problems.
Meaning, it's going to cause problems if we vacate?
He runs a, that'll give him the right to park trailers and stuff along the side of the roads, and the road is very narrow. It's not wide enough for even two vehicles. And if you vacate the road to his half, he'll start using his half for part of his business. And then I won't be able to go down my drive. He'd actually be able to make it so I won't be able to use the road.
So that's yet another concern, is that then, because the property line runs center of the road, all of a sudden, there's not enough access for Mr. Youngblood to give back to his portion or his property.
You see the maps, the road, the building, Mr. Tharp's building, that sets directly on the property line of the road and down. There's no setback at all. And if you get online and look at the map, a real estate map, it shows that the overhang is actually on the road. His air conditioner, his pad for a door there is all on public property. And so when he moves, parks something there, then I won't be able to use the road. So I guess if we can't vacate to my property line, I'm going to have to put up with people coming down, turning around in my yard, and the sheriff can tell me I can't do a dang thing about it. And...
Well, you understand the concerns with kind of exempting 300 feet?
What?
You understand that there's concerns with we can't do just so much of the road and then say, but not the last 300 feet?
I would love to have it, the 300 feet stay county, and the rest return to me. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
And that would, and as far as the snowplow going down it, I'm going to clean the road all the way to the end every time anyway, because I'm not going to stop and wait for the county to come do 300 feet. I mean, I've been cleaning the road for 40 years already.
Well, we appreciate that, but that doesn't prevent the county from their responsibility as well, so makes it rather difficult.
It hasn't bothered me. I mean, their responsibility hasn't bothered me for 40 years, so.
Yeah.
My thing is trying to be able to stop people from driving down into my yard, turning around, and, I mean, the way the world's coming, you never know what kind of crazy person's going to drive down there and see this as an opportunity.
I would assume, though, Mr. Tharp maybe would have some reservations if we were to do everything except those 300 feet?
When we were at our fencing meeting, he said he wouldn't be okay with that.
I don't recall the discussion at the fencing meeting concerning the vacation of the road, but I, just looking at it, it doesn't change much for him if we leave the 300 feet as is, because then that's going to remain unchanged along the Tharp property. I see no reason he'd have a problem with that. And I actually think there's concern, you know, there's competing concerns. On one hand, as Tim just brought up, there's a, you know, Tharp could park things on that half of what is now right-of-way if we were to vacate the entire run of it. At the same time, Tharp could argue that, you know, he, now if he couldn't use the other part of that right-of-way, that could devalue his property because it would limit access to it. And so that's where, and I'm looking at the second page of the handout that has this in front. If you look at the second page of that, you can kind of see what I'm talking about. That area with the crosshashes, that's the Tharp property, and there are two, I believe, two separate parcels there that you kind of see divided by a line. But it's what would happen, you know, it would limit access to that property from the west if that right-of-way were to be made private. So I see concerns on both sides. I don't know, or I don't believe that Corey Tharp would have an objection to that, but I don't recall what he said about it offhand.
But Kathy, at this point, then, the recommendation from the engineer's office?
Well, frankly, we don't, we haven't done anything for 40 years. If he, if it all gets vacated and he still continues to plow, or, excuse me, if we do leave the 300 feet unvacated and he continues to plow it, operationally wise, we're the same as we are today. So I really don't have any concerns. It's more of a legal issue of him working on our road, but he's been doing that for 40 years. So I can go either way at this point.
What's the classification on the road right now? Is it?
Technically, it is, it is a county road.
Okay. So could it, this makes sense, if it was just to protect everything, or, you know, so there's no liability and such, since we're someone else doing work on a county road, could we vacate all but the last 300 feet and then change those 300 feet to be, you know, B-road?
So the winter maintenance would definitely be a problem for us, getting a mortar grader to go, you know, the 300 feet, and then backing up. We just wouldn't advise that for our operator to back up.
I mean, like, we wouldn't maintain it all.
Yeah, what are we doing now with the winter, with the plowing?
Right. He's taking care of it.
Right, now he doesn't.
So to me, I don't know, I don't have a concern about the winter if our current operation, we're not accounting for it anyways.
Right.
And he's not going to plow up to 300 feet and then just be stuck, right?
Forty years, I'm going to continue to plow the road.
Yeah.
And even if they, it would be vacated after 300 feet, that is open field, where turning around would not be a problem for a snowplow.
That was the other thing I was going to mention, is if, if Mr. Youngblood could commit some property that we could have easement for a turnaround on there, that might, that might change the whole outlook a little bit, too, on that, if indeed there's a concern about us having to fulfill plowing or other maintenance obligation in the future.
I would agree with that. I would also agree with Mr. Youngblood's assessment that we, we plow Washburn Road, obviously, with a truck plow. This would mean diverting a mortar grader to plow this portion of gravel. So he's going to get there before we do, probably by a day. So just depending on the, you know, the snowfall, we wouldn't send a mortar grader down that road unless it was over two inches anyway. So most of the time, he's going to be far ahead if he just continues to do the winter maintenance himself.
So typically, from my understanding, like, in a city, you don't allow private to plow public streets and public roads. Do we have an issue here if we're?
So, you're on to something. There can be concern when you got a private citizen plowing on a public street. Now, it actually happens with some regularity in town. If a plow, you know, a truck, a pickup with a blade goes out, they're going to plow their way through to get to wherever they got to go. But having said that, two things. Number one, yeah, I think there's some concern about whether they potentially create some liability depending on how they plow it. That obviously hasn't been raised in several decades, which is part of the reason I hadn't raised it right now. Number two, there is a concern that a future owner of Mr. Youngblood's property may suddenly demand that the county maintain that 300 feet or whatever we have to do. So you could say, well, we have to plan for that, and that's a concern as well.
Is there some type of agreement or something, I guess, that could be done? Because that's what I'm thinking, too. Were something to happen and you couldn't do it, or for some reason you no longer chose to do the cleaning in the wintertime? The responsibility, I guess, of the county, where does that fall, or what occurs at that point? Kathy, I mean, I'm just saying, it's great that he's done it for 40 years, but he's not been obligated to, and there's not been any reason for you to do it.
I agree in principle with all that's been said. However, in reality, like I said, we would need to send a mortar grader over to plow that out. And just operationally, we're going to do our 60 miles of our normal routes before we would come over and do this 300 feet. That's just the way it would be. That's the way, you know, we would leave these smaller, shorter routes till the end.
If we, we have on the wrong track here, but if we, actually, that 300 feet, if that was classified as a B-road, then we wouldn't be under obligation to put the motor grader down it?
So yes, that would be another option, that we downgrade it to a Class B road, and because we typically do very little to our Class B roads as well. And maybe, I assume we would stop the Class B at the 300 feet, because you want total control beyond the 300 feet.
I see no reason we can't do that.
I guess we'd take a little bit of time between the legal and the engineer's office.
There's a process we'll have to go through still, but yeah, that...
See if it is.
And it'd start with ascertaining the distance exactly, so it can be surveyed and then, but yeah, that can be done, I think.
And should we not ask Mr. Tharp as well, since you said that he wasn't included in that conversation?
Part of the process would involve his input through notice to neighboring property owners. So he'd definitely have an opportunity.
Does that sound at least like a plan to move forward with it, Tim?
Yes, thank you for that.
See where we go from there, but thank you.
My second part is with Blackhawk warning administrator. This started back in September 21st of 2022. I received a letter from the administrator that you have that says that I need to cease putting riffraff along the river. He got this from Aerial Views. I have, there's riffraff all along the river by different people besides myself. None of those people got this letter. So Mr. Tharp came down at this time because he was wanting to get a trucking company put in on the property. He was already running a trucking company there, but it wasn't his own for that. And Mr. Tharp admitted to me that he complained about my riffraffing that he could see from the river. So this letter was sent to me by the administrator because... because Mr. THARP made a complaint against my riffraff, the riffraffing of the river. I called the zoning administrator and he was very apologetic for sending the letter because I had never put any riffraff on that river before, after 2004. My father had a permit for riffraffing. The Gilreville Bridge was redone back in 2002, '03, somewhere in there. And all the debris from the bridge was put along the river as riffraff by Blackhawk County and PCI. So it was all a permitted thing. But I received this letter because Mr. THARP made a complaint. And, and to me, that is not being a very truthful letter because he said he did it just because of aerial views. Then I moved to the next letter I received from the boarding administrator. It says that I stopped by Cory THARP's property at 684 A Tuesday. Per the zoning ordinance, we allow incidental grading and maintenance of vehicle use areas within the floodway. The placement of a dump truck of gravel is allowed within the floodway to act as a ramp. No rise certificate is not as needed. If you read the, the Blackhawk code for sensitive areas, there's nowhere, I have gone through this with a microscope and I found no place in it that says that you are allowed to grade and do this kind of activity without a permit. On section Roman numeral XV L, on page 67 of our code, environmental sensitive area development permits. Permits required. An environmental sensitive area development permit is issued by the administrator shall be secured prior to any floodplain development, any man-made change or improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings, structures, mining, filling, grading, paving, excavation, and drilling operations. Application for environmental area permit shall be made on forms supplied by the administrator. Description of the work should be covered. So, Mr. THARP, I have, I showed you a, I'll go back to this in here, and a zoning board meeting Mr. THARP was at, Mr. Mueller. This is on the minutes of the meeting. It says, "It was moved by Mueller and seconded by Beck to approve the request for a special permit to allow auto and recreation vehicle dealership on the CM Commercial Manufacturing Districts with conditions that there cannot be a residence on the property. The illegal lean-to must be removed and the ground cannot be raised because it is in the floodplain." Then I have a diagram here of what I was called and asked the board administrator if he needed a fill, a permit for, which shows precast cement blocks that are size of 24 wide, 21 long, six feet tall. Up to 20 foot of them were laid out on each side. Then another two were stacked on top of that to make it four foot high by 20 foot long with approximate space of 18 feet between the two sides. And then it was filled with three dump truck loads of rock. And I, that's why I asked, why does this not need a permit? When the zoning laws say it does? Because that is a structure. It was filled and precast block are added to the floodplain. All, all of, all along since Mr. THARP has moved into the area, he got a trucking permit that was denied. Mr. Administrator called him and asked him about it. And then they set up a meeting where it was denied by the board because they don't believe that you can have, should have truckings in the county like that, whether it's one, two, or three trucks. So there was no trucks supposed to be allowed on the property. I called the administrator and complained that he is continuing to run his trucking business after he was told he wasn't supposed to. I brought, I came up here and talked to you all about it at that time, brought pictures. And to this day, he's still running his trucking business off this property. I have a flash drive that if you want hundreds of pictures showing him going in and off this property from the neighbors across the streets, door cams, shows he's running them. He's even gotten so brave as to pull out, pull out and honk at my neighbors with the horn of his semis as he goes by. But nothing seems to happen. And I am wondering why the administrator is letting all this slide by. And that's my complaint. Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All the folks from the City of Waterloo who we contract with, obviously, as you know, for planning and zoning issues. Thank you.
Eric Schrader, City Planner for the City of Waterloo and Contract Zoning Services for Blackhawk County. First off regarding the trucking business that was brought to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Office as well as the Board, as the Board is aware, that was investigated by Rory and the City of Waterloo Code Enforcement Department, which also is part of that contract to provide services to Blackhawk County. I don't remember the exact time on that. That was quite a few months ago. But the end result of that investigation was that there was not believed to be proof that there was a trucking business being operated. So that certainly can be revisited, but Code Enforcement would have to get back involved. And that, yes, ultimately, if they were to believe that a violation was in place, they would have to issue a citation, but they would need proof of that violation. And currently, they, to my knowledge, they do not have that. So, but that certainly can be relooked at. No problems there. Regarding the filling and grading issue, we will take a closer look at that. It was brought to our attention and Seth, the County Zoning Administrator, did send a letter indicating, which is, a copy of that is included in here, that it wasn't considered a violation. It sounds like what was conveyed to us is what was done. The scope may be a little bit different. It looks like it's a little bit more substantive. But there's kind of a fine line between general maintenance of your property and what would be considered filling and grading. So the zoning ordinance does not have a definition of that. So it would be based on the interpretation of the zoning administrator. So there are properties all across the county, including lots of properties that are in a flood zone that have gravel driveways, gravel parking lots. And routine maintenance of that is not considered fill. It's not considered grading, does not require floodplain approval. The scope of this one maybe is a little bit different. It sounds like it was a little more substantive, a little more height. So we can take a look at that. Bottom line, if it is interpreted as, as something that would be considered filling, then it would require the floodplain development permit, just as he cited in the zoning ordinance. We would have to review with the DNR to make a final determination on if no rise certification was required or not required. Probably wouldn't be for gravel, as gravel is porous material. Water can soak into the gravel. But we'll take a further look at that.
I think it's these precast cement blocks that sound problematic, that's actually there. Because that would create a wall of sorts.
It could create a wall of sorts, yeah. And, and I was not aware that there was precast wall erected. So we can take a closer look at that.
Would that be Code Enforcement? Would they have to take a look at that or would that be your department?
Our office will start. Anything else for planning and zoning?
Mr. THARP, or the boarding administrator, according to that letter, drove out and looked at this. The block was there when that, he looked. I have pictures of it. If you would like to see them on my phone, it shows you what he looked at. Could I show you? Would you care to look at my phone pictures?
Well, if you want to send those to us, why don't you? Because it doesn't sound like, we're not going to resolve it today, but the pictures might be helpful. So if you want to send those to us, that'd be great.
There is over 20 of these cement precast blocks on the property. And they, each one is 21 cubic feet, weighing 2,000 pounds. And I guess if the county determines that that is okay to do that, then I don't understand why, on the other side of the road, they're filing charges against a neighbor who built a garage, which will displace less water, less cubic feet of material than is being displaced by this area. And when you bring in three dump truck loads of rock and put that in there, each dump truck weighs 16 to 20 tons. So according to, I, zoning, and this was all put on ground that had grass underneath of it. This was not put on ground. That was gravel. It was grass underneath. It was never, that was never a parking area. It was a building that never had an entrance into it on that end. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say, they did say they were willing to look at it, so that is good. Is there anything from anyone else, I guess, comments or questions? Because it sounds like we have people willing to look at it and go forward with it. Back to us. All right, we want to move on.
Yeah, no, I just appreciate follow-up from planning, zoning, and Code Enforcement.
Thank you.
Eric, or roughly timeline of when we can expect to hear back, report back from you?
Eric Schrader. We'll try and get out there yet this week and we'll have to, if DNR involvement is required, that could slow it down a little bit to see how quickly we can get a response. But within a week or two, hopefully, we can have a response.
Yeah, I think if, if you can get us some sort of communication within, within a week or so, whether it is, hey, we're waiting on DNR, we think there might be this or whatever, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I make one more statement, please?
Sure.
Heck, last time I came up here in May, it was about the dike being moved. In that instance, the administrator, by text messaging, told Mr. THARP that he could grade his property and level off berms. So the dike got moved. It never got put back the way it was. It never was seeded like it was supposed to have been seeded back to grass. Right now, it is just a big pile of weeds growing on top of it. If the administrator would have followed the rules of zoning, that dike would have never been moved. There's an application in there that shows that you should, if, he should have had gotten an application to do the grading and leveling of berms on the property. And now, the flood protection that that whole neighborhood had has been weakened considerably because of the lack of following the rules by the board administrator.
I know the correction was made, but maybe not to your satisfaction is what you're saying.
I'm sorry, I'm down.
No, that's all right. I said, I know the correction was made to that berm, but I, it sounds, but not to your satisfaction.
Yes, I asked for an inspection and as far as I know, I was asked for inspection. I said, I would like to been there when it was inspected. I've never seen any results of that inspection. I don't have video evidence, but if you'd like to come out, I can show you where there's two foot of dirt that was never moved. It's still, dirt ran over, he pushed it right against my property. The dirt ended up on my property through the fence. It still lays there. And there's two barbed wires of the fence. There's dirt that high up on the fence. At the end of the property where it goes into the actual real floodplain, he pushed dirt out into the lower part of the floodplain into where it floods at 12 foot, which happens quite regularly. These are all inconsistencies with the rules according to the ES. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Eric Schrader again. Yes, absolutely. He should not have moved that berm without getting approval. That was considered a violation of the zoning ordinance. He was notified as such. We did consult with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources on how to move forward. And he was provided the option to move the berm back. As you noted, he did move the berm back. We did inspect it, both myself and Seth. We're on-site and inspected it. It, it looks good to us. So I, I can't say if there, you know, if there was some dirt pushed over a property line. I'm guessing Mr. THARP's not going to cross that property line because then he would probably be trespassing. So we did inspect it. Yeah, I, I'm not saying that it apparently was not up to Mr. Youngblood's expectations, but we did inspect it and determine it to be substantially completed back to where it was. There was, I think it would be a good idea to seed it, but we have, the Blackhawk County doesn't have like a stormwater pollution prevention plan like the City of Waterloo does that requires erosion control, seeding, maintenance, that sort of thing. So we had no means to force any sort of seeding. So I guess, I don't really have any more to address on it.
Thank you, Eric. All right, we'll move on.
Uh, Board?
Yes, yes.
Hi, Rory Giving, Facilities Director. I just wanted to mention also with regards to the complaint of operating a trucking company. Mr. Youngblood and myself have had several conversations on this in the past. I've made personally several trips out there myself to see if I could witness what would be a trucking company. I tried to determine what, what the definition of a trucking company is. I've reviewed footage from some of the neighbors that are across the street from this property. What I've witnessed personally is I have seen a semi. I've seen a tractor trailer. I just, in, in, in my good conscience, I could not determine, you know, he was operating a trucking company or if he was, just had his own tractor trailer that he was parking on his property. I don't believe that really constitutes a trucking business. In talking with Mr. Youngblood, it sounds like there have been multiple tractor trailers out there. So I will be working with our outsourced Code Enforcement and we will take another stab at this to see, you know, what we can find. But as of right now, I just did not have enough evidence to, to go with, to constitute a trucking company. So just wanted to share that with you folks.
Thank you, Rory.
Can I say one last thing, please?
He would bring up the minutes of the meeting where he asked for the trucking company there. It was stated in those minutes that you cannot, he asked if you had one or two or three trucks on the property. It was stated by the Board of Adjustments that you cannot keep trucks on the property because that would consist of a trucking company.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Moving on to item eight, any reports or information from the Board? All right. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aight, aight.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.